Choose what I support and what I don't.
Okay.
So.
Can I speak to that then? If that's our...I mean, normally you don't hear me speak to these items. As a business administrator, oh Steve.
Oh, girl.
As the business administrator, I realize that there are multiple expendable trusts that we have here. I'm going to ask that you, as a board, approve this one, recommend this one. I understand the others. This one is just our fail-safe catch safety net if something does happen. Like, as this board has already taken out about $60,000 in our...$30,000, excuse me, in our repair for the heating, for the boiler. I know a boiler itself costs about $30,000 that we have had to replace. So, this would be the place to put it. Like I said, I understand the other ones are more specific and they address other issues, but if you were to vote for one of these, this is what I would ask that you vote for, is the one that is the more generalized one for the whole building, so that if something were to happen, we would have the money to pull from. Thank you.
In 2007, nobody expected almost $300,000 to have to come out the next year. And if we don't move forward with renovating it, we don't know it happened. And it does need to start having the money available to do the repairs that are needed otherwise.
Yeah. What I'm also looking at, for instance, the money wouldn't be used for bathrooms. It wouldn't be used for the roof, because you have a roof expendable trust, okay? It wouldn't be used for windows, right? I mean, there's a point where, you know, outside of a boiler going, you've got one for everything here. What would it be used for?
Those are all more planned. They seem like specific planned projects, you know, the windows, the bathrooms. This, you know, as you said, this is more of the, you know, what are we not...I mean, what are we not expecting? You're asking, what are we not expecting?
Worst-case scenario.
You know, anyone not here, please stand up and identify themselves. We don't know.
There'll be $700,000 in there if it's passed. What is the worst-case scenario that you need $700,000?
Another roof. Another roof or a septic.
But you have a roof...first of all, how much is in the roof one?
The roof...I'm just...that's why I'm saying, if you were to vote for one, this is the one that I really would, because it covers them all.
How much is in the roof?
Oh, my eyes are getting worse. Gosh. Roof is the bottom line. $135,000, which was approved last year.
So, if the roof went, you'd have close to $1 million in there.
No. No, $135,000.
Seven hundred...oh, so $835,000. You'd have $835,000. So, you've got $135,000 in the roof.
See what you mean.
This is $700,000. That's $835,000, right? That's enough to cover a roof.
A port, yeah.
That's plenty, and of course it is. And if the roof is the worst-case scenario, all I'm saying is, you have the money. That's all.
For a roof? That's what I'm saying. If you vote for the roof and not for the general maintenance one, and something else goes, that's why I think most of you are understanding that. Am I not being clear on it?
Oh, you're clear.
Okay, all right.
We ready to take the vote?
Well, we've still got the issue about the word "building" in there. And we know that that can pay for an architect and plans ahead of time.
Ah, you're right.
And that's been a problem. It's been five years I've been addressing that. And I think Kathy's right, you ought to have the flexibility, but it still is that building thing. And we had the attorney, Barbara Lowen, said, "Yeah, they could use it for an architect and draw plans."
Barbara Lowen also said that the $30,000 was paid in last year's budget, and it was not, so.
They could have taken it right out of here.
How can they use that if it says repair or maintaining?
Building, comma, repairing, comma, maintaining school facilities. I asked this question when this was first brought up.
Yeah, I know, I remember.
And because Gilminton did that, they took money, drew up the plans, had the architect, and the voters voted it down, and as far as I know, they're still sitting over there because the voters never approved them.
Ready to take the vote? Ready?
I guess I'm gonna vote no. I'm trying to amend it to floor again.
Ready? Mark Dicoff, no.
Steve Miller, no.
Lawrence Tilly, yes.
Virgil McDonald, no.
Oh, my gosh. Wait a second. The school board's in session right now.
Yes, we can vote it...they can vote on it.
They can vote on it right now.
Change that. So, we could bring it back up to improve it.
How about you people voting...how about you considering voting taking out building out of that warrant article?
I'd change my vote.
I would. That's the word that's stopping me.
You want to put it to a vote, Krista?
So, you want just the purpose of building?
Or a purpose of repairing?
Repairing and maintaining.
Repairing and maintaining.
Because that's what you said it's for. Everything was repairing and maintaining. Not once was building mentioned. So, if that's the case. Right.
Personally, I don't have a problem with it. I don't know if building would have some other connotation.
But, yeah, if you take that out and that warrant article passes, you couldn't use that money to put towards it, right?
Correct. Because it says building.
This $150,000, if it passes, and the next year you go...say, next year, you couldn't use it for building. It could only be used for repair and maintenance.
You can change it.
However...
60% of it's renovation, though. That should fall under repair. 60% of that $18 million is renovation cost, really.
I don't believe because...
What about changing building to renovating? Renovating, repairing, or maintaining?
I'm gonna have to stop you there. I really do believe that changing the wording in this warrant article would create a brand-new warrant article, and it would be a brand-new trust...expendable trust fund, because the monies previously have been slated and slated for building.
You're 100% right.
Okay, thank you.
And I get your point with it, and I don't have a problem with what it is you're doing. I'm just wondering on legal grounds if I would be making the right decision to ask the board to act on this tonight. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I wouldn't ask you.
So, we're starting a new one?
She's absolutely right.
It's not as simple as we maybe thought.
Because all the money in the past has had the word "building," and the voters have made a decision...
Changes intent, yep.
To use it for building if that's what they want. That's what they wanted to.
All right, so, continue with the vote?
Yeah.
Barbara, we were at you.
So, I said no.
Okay.
Me too, no.
Yes.
So, two yeses, five nos?
Keep the motion in the second on that, please.
Steve.
I can see. The motion we accept Article 11 is presented. Mark Dicoff.
Second for discussion.
Seconded by Steve Miller.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I forgot we're on tape.
Yeah. I'd vote in favor of it, because who knows, you know, $135,000 you need for the roof. I mean, I know you can still take it out of the bill, out of the $440,000 if you needed it, but, you know, the roof is still a problem. I'd have to vote absolutely yes for it.
All right, I'll call the vote. Mark Dicoff, yes.
Steve Miller, yes.
Lawrence Tilly, yes.
Virgil McDonald, no.
Is this enough money to do what needs to be done to the roof?
No, just me.
Well, we already have $135,000 in there, so adding more.
Who knows? It's the crystal ball.
It'll be $270,000.
Barbara Howard, yes.
Lauren Kaye, yes.
Kristoher Dropples, yes.
Six yeses, one no. Article 12, my motion we accept is presented.
I second.
Seconded by Steve Miller.
How much is in there now?
I knew you were gonna ask.
Just go to the back, right here.
No, he wants me to look.
What? It's a lot easier just to ask. Okay. There's gotta be more. We gotta put more money in there.
This is one that, when we discussed it previously, they said that even if the renovation doesn't go forward, there's still some windows they can't...
There's gotta be...we gotta put more money in there.
That is correct.
So, is it the plan to use the architect every time you want to replace windows? Because I remember when you did the last window replacement, there was quite a bit of money spent on the architect.
It was a larger project, though. It wasn't just the windows. It was the bathroom, and the lighting, and the gym roof, and then the lighting in the art room. And he does get a percentage. I'll be right up front, he gets a percentage of the total cost of the bid. It's based on the bid, what the bid is accepted at. And it is lower...his rate happens to be lower than most. It's about 5%. Where I know Steve Miller had suggested, stated that the going rate is about 8. He's lower than that. He's about 5.
Oh, that's good.
We ready to take the vote?
Mm-hmm.
Mark Dicoff, yes.
Steve Miller, yes.
Lawrence Tilly, yes.
Virgil McDonald, yes.
Barbara Howard, yes.
Lauren Kaye, yes.
Kristoher Dropples, yes.
Seven yeses. The motion, Mark Dicoff motions to accept Article 13 as presented.
I'll say I'll second.
Steve Miller, seconds.
You gotta fix those bathrooms no matter what. I don't care if they're just in there for two more years or one more year. They gotta be fixed now.
The time we did spend the money on those bathrooms in the middle school wing, it was $69,000 that we spent on them. So, right now, we have $31,103 in that account.
It's not enough in there.
They also, Steve, Article 10 is for repairing and maintaining school facilities.
Mm-hmm.
And the...
My guess is you can put easily $50,000 into those bathrooms.
They've got $440 in there.
My question is, is this money, will that take care of the problem that you're having with the backing up?
That is actually being looked at right now. And it's gonna be...I do believe, and don't quote me, but I do believe it's gonna be expended to fix the backing up of the sinks in the ERC. Right now, that's what we're looking specifically at, because it's a situation right now. Even though the bathroom's down in the ERC, you're absolutely right, it need to be taken care of, but the sinks...
So, is it just water that's coming up the sink? It's not...it's not...
I don't know the specific details of it.
Because...
Somebody threw sulfuric acid down the drains.
If it's anything other than water that's backing up, I mean, that's highly toxic. And sewer gas is lethal, FYI.
On steel pipes. They threw sulfuric acid down there. Oh, well.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, the answer was, is that you're looking at how much it's gonna cost to repair the plumbing?
The plumbing for those sinks.
Plumbing is not necessarily in here. This is just to make it look pretty so girls wanna go to school and not stay home, because the bathrooms don't look good.
This is just another fund. We have a repair fund, repair and maintenance fund up here on 10.
All right, I'll call the vote. Mark Dicoff, yes.
Is the money gonna be spent in the bathrooms in my lifetime?
What? I don't know. You got anything you need to tell us?
They have $440,000 they can put in.
Okay. Steve Miller, yes.
They have $440,000 they can put in.
I'm doing this if they spend the money.
Lawrence Tilly, yes.
I think we like the bathrooms in the middle school wing. They turned out very well.
Okay, great. I just want you to do it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Barbara Howard.
What was Virgil's vote?
No.
Okay.
I tend to agree with Virgil.
Too many funds.
No.
I don't know why you're not taking out the $400,000 nice sale, Virgil.
Plus, they got $30,000 in here and $440 up there for repairing them. It'll be a pretty nice bathroom.
I didn't hear all these. Yes. Yeah, and if you took out the $440, you actually could do it.
No.
Kristoher Dropples, yes.
Four yeses, three nos. Dicoff motions, Article 14 as presented.
Second.
Steve Miller, seconds. Call the vote. Mark Dicoff, yes.
Are we gonna install a fire system in this school? If it...no, no, if the project doesn't pass?
The fire suppression system is something...
I don't believe we would, because unless we have another roof issue where we have to take everything out and expose it, then it's a lot more work, yeah. It's blown.
Okay, there's $239,000 in there. I vote no.
Plus, it all comes under the repair and maintenance, not building.
Yeah, no. It's not gonna be spent.
Keep adding all these different funds.
They're not spending the money.
For discussion, same as, you know, Steve said, gets back to like with the geothermal, you know, as part of the project, I definitely agree with, but as a holding place, you know, for funds, I'd say no as well.
Virgil McDonald, no.
Barbara Howard, no.
Lauren Kaye, no.
Kristoher Dropples, yes.
Two yeses, five nos. Mark Dicoff, my motion, Article 15 as presented.
Second.
Steve Miller, seconds.
Okay, because we lowered the electricity funding and some fuel funding in the operational budget, my reasoning was, is that the contingency fund made more sense, because what was not expended here has to go back to the taxpayers. The operational budget does not next...that money that surplus funds can be used for other purposes theoretically and actually. So, that's why I would recommend the contingency fund.
Any other? Call the vote. Mark Dicoff, yes.
Steve Miller, yes.
Lawrence Tilly, yes.
Virgil McDonald, yes.
Barbara Howard, yes.
Lauren Kaye, yes.
Kristoher Dropples, yes.
Seven yeses. Mark Dicoff motions, special warrant article 16 as read...or presented, sorry.
Second. I'm sorry, Virgil.
Virgil McDonald, seconds. Discussion?
I...how much is in there now?
This is a brand-new...
Brand-new one?
Brand-new.
And it's gonna be used specifically for what?
Parking lots.
For the parking lot?
There are different parking lots.
Okay, if the project goes through, they're gonna rip up the parking lot anyway.
So, this says if it were defeated, it wouldn't be...it would be null.
Okay, is...I'm asking the school board, is there any intention of spending this money during the next year?
We don't have plans right now. We have done some improvements to the parking lot last year, based on monies left in our buildings and grounds funds. A hard pack was put around for parking area, because we're starting to get big divots in the parking. I don't know if you've seen, but I think I've seen you at ballgames there. If you park there where the dirt was and all that, that's now a hard pat surface. That's been taken partially around. I think we'd like to take that a little bit further around. It's not terribly costly to do that, but, you know, something like this would allow us to do that, not to mention, you know, fixing up the parking lot. And there's more than one parking area, actually. There's that parking area, there's also the one down by the gym and the music room entrance. There's parking over by the principal's office area, where the yellow, you know, those yellow poles are, used to be the handicap parking. And then there's parking across the street as well. The town maintains that, basically, but I believe we're...it's up to us to paint the, you know, to do the painting and all that kind of stuff and signage.
I would only vote in favor of it if you were gonna do something in the coming fiscal year. If not, I would prefer to see $20,000 or $30,000 two years from now, when you're ready to do it, as opposed to just putting into a fund, you know, as a petty cash fund in case we need it. So, $10,000 is easy, comes out of building and grounds, maintenance, grounds being the operative word, maintenance being the operative word. So, I would...I'm gonna vote no.
And something I'm just gonna throw out there, you know, we've got several other articles through here like this, you know, as you know. You know, our focus right now is the renovation, you know? That's what we've got our sights on. That's what we want, in all honesty. That's what we want. There's things that I would like to see done if that doesn't happen, you know, buildings and grounds meetings. I've talked about, you know, we need to have a Plan B just to be safe, because you don't know...you can't predict what's gonna happen. You can recommend things. We could, you know, you could have something recommended by the board and the Budget Committee and still see it fail when it goes to the voters. So, you know, just being realistic.
Sure.
Like with the windows, there was specific plans that even if the renovation doesn't go through, there are window plans, you know, if you had parking areas that needed to be resurfaced or needed to be addressed, regardless of the renovation or not, you know, then it's appropriate to, you know, set the money aside for that for this year.
Right. And personally speaking, I'd rather not spend a whole lot of money right now on parking lot or whatever, considering we would be having construction going on, that kind of thing. It wouldn't be worth it. If it makes it so that we're not getting people stuck in mud holes come spring, then I'm, you know, we need to definitely do the maintenance and take care of that, because, you know, that...you can't have that happening.
I've helped push cars out of that little lary before you packed it.
If it was that important, they should've come out of the other fund and do it all at the same time.
All right, I'll call the vote. Mark Dicoff, no.
Steve Miller, no.
Lawrence Tilly, no.
Virgil McDonald, no.
Barbara Howard, no.
Lauren Kaye, no.
Kristoher Dropples, yes.
One yes, six nos. Mark Dicoff motions, Article 17 as presented.
Second.
Virgil McDonald, seconds.
I think they need it. Yep.
I'll call the vote. Mark Dicoff, yes.
Steve Miller, yes.
Lawrence Tilly, yes.
Virgil McDonald, yes.
Barbara Howard, yes.
Lauren Kaye, yes.
Kristoher Dropples, yes.
Mark Dicoff motions, Article 18 as presented.
Seconded.
Virgil McDonald, seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, I like the idea that if this is built up, that's all the money that could be used for...let's say there's $60,000 in there, $100,000, $90,000, what it should be, pick a number. If it isn't used for that, it can't be used for anything else. If it's in the operating budget, and there's money left over, and there's always money left over for improvement of instruction, that can be used for anything they want.
Well, that's what we gotta watch, just to make sure that we don't give out an extra $1,500 or anything else with it.
Exactly.
$2,000, $2,000 only.
We know that all you have to do is figure out $2,000, you know, times the amount of teachers, you know, are...plus whoever's contracted for it, and that's essentially...
You get paperwork, how much is...
Yeah, then you know exactly how much should be in there, not a dime more in any given year. Okay? So, this way the taxpayers have control.
Call the vote. Mark Dicoff, yes.
Steve Miller, yes.
Lawrence Tilly, yes.
Virgil McDonald, yes.
Barbara Howard, yes.
Lauren Kaye, yes.
Kristoher Dropples, yes.
Seven yeses. Mark Dicoff motions, Article 19 as presented.
Second.
Steve Miller, seconds. Discussion?
Same reason.
Call the vote. Mark Dicoff, yes.
Steve Miller, yes.
Lawrence Tilly, yes.
Virgil McDonald, yes.
Barbara Howard, yes.
Lauren Kaye, yes.
Kristoher Dropples, yes.
Seven yeses. Mark Dicoff motions, Article 20 as presented.
Seconded.
Steve Miller, seconds.
It still makes sense. A contingency fund, you know, is...can only be used for utilities. But, I caution you that there were not significant cuts made, you know, in the operational budget, and it may have been a function that they would...
We cut the electrical in the...
This is for the high school.
The high school, yeah.
We did cut the high school.
$15,000.
I've got that information.
I can't...
Yeah.
You've got it? How much we cut in the high school?
The warrant article, it comes back, the contingency fund comes...literally comes back. So, it's good if we made significant cuts in the high school, then this makes sense.
But they didn't take all our advice on all the cuts, though, did they?
And...but they can't go into this unless it's for utilities, and if they do, then they absolutely need it.
Now, these are the cuts the JMA made, or...
Yeah.
Or is this what the school board went with?
$15,000 was the cut for electricity.
But is that what the school board went with?
Can I show you, if I can show you what's on here? The Joint Budget Committee proposed cuts is the first column that you see on here.
Yeah.
And there's no grid on here, and I'm sorry for that. That's the way it was given to me tonight. The Joint Budget Committee's final cuts is the middle column here. Yeah, the Joint Budget Committee. And then the JMA Board's cuts is this last column that you see over here, and then the notes on what it was. This far column over here, the far left, is your department numbers. So, like, out of 1,100, the Joint Budget Committee proposed, and it starts with $13,000, and then $1,365, so on.
But you didn't cut electricity.
Well, they didn't know if this article would pass.
One other thing is, we voted on the bottom line. So, we're gonna go back and...
This is from Chuck today.
Well, once we've...
Say that again, Linda.
Cut the dues and fees either for the profession, you know, professionals.
All right, call the vote. Mark Dicoff, yes. Steve Miller, yes.
Lawrence Tilly, yes.
You can't revisit this and add money. We just voted...
They can change the distribution.
They can move it around.
Virgil McDonald, no.
Barbara Howard, no.
They're gonna do what they would've done already.
Lauren Kaye, yes.
Kristoher Dropples, yes.
Five yeses, two nos. Article 21, Mark Dicoff motions, Article 21 is presented. Any discussion? Call the vote. Mark Dicoff, yes.
I think there's only $70,555 in that fund, and they said they just spent $32,000.
Yeah, I just had a request from a...
What's the request for?
For $32,000.
For what, though?
I haven't looked through all of the paperwork.
Fire suppression system.
It means it's broken?
No, they had the leak system.
Yep.
Okay.
Required flush to the system by the state fire marshal. Because there was the...
Okay, so there's only $38,000 in there now. Okay. Steve Miller, yes.
Lawrence Tillie, yes.
Hmm, I got a question. This money, any of this money spent for doing the wells and irrigation stuff?
What, recently has any of it been spent for that?
Oh, last year.
Ever.
The truck that was out there all the, the whole year, drilling water wells.
I don't think it came out of that. But I would have to check with Chuck. If you don't mind recessing for a minute, I can get you an answer on that.
Do you want an answer?
Oh, I feel that maintenance is not putting in a new sprinkler system.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, do you? You think that's maintenance?
I don't.
They have almost a million-dollar line item for maintaining that building a year.
Linda says they're putting in a maintenance system. I gotta believe her.
No, no, it's, they're flushing the system. That's a maintenance to flush it.
But they also tried to put in...
But did they use money out of the account?
Also tried to do an irrigation system, put in a new irrigation system.
They used money out of this account.
And that sounds like a capital improvement thing, not a maintenance.
You talking about for the baseball field?
Any of the fields or any of that?
I don't know.
It's just used by the...
So you want to recess?
We can recess for just like five minutes. Linda's...
Hey, we'll recess for five minutes. Are we ready? You ready?
Yep.
All right. Call the Alton Budget Committee session back in order. So you...
Oh, no. It did come from the general maintenance fund, which was split 50-50 between Alton and Brice.
The irrigation, what, the wells?
The wells. And what was the total spent on that?
Jeez.
Sorry.
Came out of the general maintenance fund. Not the reserve.
Yeah.
That was to find a well for irrigation, correct?
Yes.
And it was never found, correct?
Correct.
And we spent a lot of money, right? Yeah, I know.
That happens when you drill a well, I guess.
You need one of those sticks with a fork.
General maintenance fund.
Bring up a diviner.
I said that to Kathy Preston. Kathy Preston and I were going to go out and do that.
I know they do. That's why I laughed.
It would have had the same result.
So how, how is a new well general maintenance? That's my question. It's not general maintenance. So how could it come out of this fund?
It was for irrigation, so it was for...
But it's a new, new well.
It's not maintenance.
Improvement.
Maintaining the fields. You can make a case that it's maintaining the fields so the fields don't die.
Would this be maintaining the fields that flood?
I don't know. I'm just saying that you can make a case that it is maintenance.
This is not their little kitty. I think it should go.
That would be like buying a tractor, a brand-new tractor, saying it's for maintaining the fields.
Drive.
Right? That's capital improvements.
And we voted against that.
Yeah, we did.
We voted against that $13,000, did we not?
Yeah.
For the baseball field? Oh, what, Chuck, I vote?
All right. It's the right thing, but it's the risk of the wrong.
Yeah.
Where's the ownership coming on it?
It's like either way, if you don't get it in the operating budget, you take it out of the Warren article.
Well, here's, here's the thing, too. I mean, you guys can vote it down tonight. I don't have the information on me to address your concerns on this, quite frankly. It's stuff I can get from the business office. You know, stuff is brought to us as a board. It's gone over by a finance committee. It's gone over by a Buildings and Grounds Committee. And those are both subcommittees within, you know, it's Prospect, Mountain Board members. But they, they bring that forward to us with their recommendations. It's a recommendation from administration. They have their justification behind it. Did I like it that money was used to find wells that didn't exist? Or whatever, you know, that, that was, nothing was found at all? You know, there was drilling done and, and nothing came of it? No, I hated that, quite frankly. But, you know, it is what it is. You know, if you vote this down tonight, it could be something that at the deliberative session, we haven't, you know, we have a better case for this or whatever. We can get you more information. We can go forward with it. If you guys decide to change your vote, you know, that's fine. Either way, yeah. Like I said, it is what it is.
There's not a lot of money, either way. Let's say they did it 100% wrong, in our estimation, hypothetically. They still only have $38,000 in there, you know, and, you know... Any, you know, you need more than $38,000 in the general maintenance fund for a building that size. You just need that. You know, because, because you can't take a time out to fix things. You know? If something significant happens, it's got to be done. If it's not managed properly, you know, that's a whole nother issue.
They have a special boiler fund, don't they? They started saving already for when the boiler goes.
No, as an example, let's say water comes out of the sprinkler system and ruins a floor.
Insurance covers that.
Yeah.
Something I want to add to, this is non-lapsing. You know, this is something that's going to be, you know, if we expend monies out of this as a hearing about that, you know, when money was expended out of it for the drilling of the wells and everything, there was a public hearing, you know? It's, there's transparency with this. We go through, you know, we go through a process for this. These subcommittees, they keep meeting minutes. They, they come to us with their recommendations. Like I said, we trust that they've gone through it with administration. They've asked the questions, you know? It's, it's, most of those subcommittees are two members of each, each board.
I got recommendations, but I voted for it. I'm going to keep my vote.
Lawrence Tillie, yes.
Virgil McDonald, no.
I voted for it before, but I'm going to say no.
Lauren Kaye, no.
Krista Dropless, yes.
Four yeses, three noes. Do we have any public input over what we just did with the school before we go into the town business? Come on up and announce.
Hi, I'm Andy McCall. Last couple of nights, I was at the school board meeting, Monday?
Yes.
I, I just, I want to... If my wife and I went to buy a house, look at our money that we had and the money we're willing to spend in the future, come up with a budget.
Andy, pull my COVID paper.
Into this, is that better?
Yeah, just so they can pick it up.
All right, I got it. I see myself, too. That would bother you before, that would bother me, too. If, if, I'll start again. If my wife and I were going to go buy a house, we'd go and look at it and get a budget together. We all done that, we've all bought houses. It, it occurs to me that a budget committee and the school board would have gotten together a long time ago and said, we can come up with 10, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 million dollars in a 10-year bond. So that's how much money we have to spend. Let's figure out how to do it best. Has that ever happened? I don't hear of that have ever happened. Lauren, you've been here the longest, as far as I know.
By RSA, there's supposed to be a school board rep on this committee.
It's not a school board rep. That's not what I'm asking for.
You asked me the question, I'm going to answer it.
Well, you're going to, you're going to slant it.
No. No, I'm not going to slam.
That's what I'm here.
So why don't you tell us what you want to hear?
Why don't you let me finish the answer?
All right, answer the question.
That could happen if we did have a school board rep to show up. That's why I'm so upset about this. That they're not fulfilling this duty. I don't think they fulfilled the duty to you people when I heard that they weren't showing up to your meetings. I agree with you. We should work on something. I busted my butt on this issue years and years. It upsets me terribly, and I agree with Steve 100%. There's got to be something done over there. But to have a group that doesn't even show up, that doesn't have any thing about it, it's not going to happen, what you're saying. There's got to be a commitment from the other side. There's been a commitment here. These people showed up. And I think you people did, too.
I'd like to see the entire board of both sides, the board and the, and the budget committee, all. Was that going to be 10 people?
No, this is...
You got six, you got six here, and how many school board?
Five.
Five, okay, so it'll be 11 people. Get all 11 people together. Talk out the whole scope of what you think should be done and where you think you should go, and then come up with a budget. You're the budget committee. I don't, I don't know if that's within your realm. I haven't read the whole RSA, and I don't understand it completely. I don't know if it's your responsibility to come up with a budget. Look ahead in the next 10 years. What do you think is going to happen in town? What your income's going to look like? Well, okay, but somebody's got to come up with a number somewhere.
They're 100% right. Absolutely.
Can he finish?
I'm sorry.
But it hasn't happened to date.
Yep.
Or has it? Has it happened by somebody else? Can, can we understand why that hasn't happened?
Sure. Two, there's two reasons why it hasn't happened. At a school board meeting, I asked, I asked the school board, when they were looking to build a school, I said, what is the budget that you gave your architect for the renovations or to build a new school? The answer is, you can check the minutes. We don't do that. We just tell the architect what he needs, and he comes back with a number. Now, listen. What you and I do when we buy a house, and if you and I were CEOs of General Motors before we buy, before we build a plant, what we do is we decide how much is a reasonable amount of money to spend and tell the architect, you have $15 million. This is what our needs are. These are what our constraints are. Can you do it? And he goes yea or nay and does it. But that's not how it was done. Because I, because I, because it, it didn't make sense in my head that you wouldn't go to an architect. And you can ask the architect, they didn't give them a number. Okay? And, and they're, the budget, the budget committee, right? Not the budget committee, the school board just presents to the budget committee. We find out with the public about an $18 million project. We don't have any advance notice. You, if you went to a Building and Grounds meeting, you found out ahead of us.
Over the history of this, I've, I've been in the town for an and a half years now. And I've seen a lot of, you know, the whole buildup to the Twombly property bit, and that collapsed and whatnot. But I can't believe there hasn't been a large group of people gotten together and sat down and worked these numbers out.
You're right.
And it's not, I'm not going to blame just the school board. I'm going to blame every voting adult in this town. So I think it's time to... If, if this doesn't go through, if the, if the people of the town don't vote for this 18 million, it's time to decide, geez, how much will we vote for? Because that's really what it comes down to. People are looking at a number. They want, they want the school. I think everybody in this town wants that school to be a heck of a lot better. I'm concerned about, you know, it's winter, it's raining and snowing. And last time, when the roof slowly started coming down, it was over my wife's office. Been very upset if I'd lost my wife.
There's another sore subject. Up until that point, they always shoveled the roof.
I'm not going to go into blame game.
On a heavy snowfall, they decided not to shovel the roof.
It's in the past. It's a blame game, it's in the past. I'm not going to waste our time. It's time to jump, step forward and see what we can do in the future.
Yes, but you know what? Sometimes history dictates the future, too.
Barbara, he needs to finish.
Sorry.
I think, I think there's a number of people in this room and, and the school board people also. And capital improvements, was this, is that a committee?
Our CIP. I think nobody's...
No more CIP anymore.
Yeah.
Nobody sure?
Okay, so it doesn't exist. So these, these are the responsible adults that have been voted in. And it's time to get together without throwing knives at each other and say, let's come up with a number. See what we can do.
Why wouldn't the school board do that? We, because we don't know what they want, that they're coming with an $18 million project.
But we also never said, how about we work with you?
You've got wants and you, and you've got halves.
Yep.
Okay, we got the wants here, we got, you know, we got, let's say we got $18 million here, and we got all these wants over here. And we got to try and fit the wants in there.
Yep.
Some will fall out, some will get reconstructed, reconfigured and dropped in.
In fairness, I did attend a few of the Building and Grounds Committee meetings, and during public input, I expressed, however, I was a very unpopular voice to be heard because I'm not in favor of spending $100,000 to raise the roof of the library to harvest natural light. Because to me, that's a heat loss, because heat rises. So what, what natural light you're going to harvest is depleted by the cost of, of heating. So, you know...
You'd have to do the numbers on that. I don't know, I don't know, technically, I don't know how that works.
However, I'm saying to you is that, you know, you go there and you just, you, if you have a difference of opinion, it's not well received. So where is the encouragement to keep going back? I stopped going.
You had a valid question. You don't know the technical, you don't know the technical results of it. To you, if you raise it and get a bigger volume...
I'm telling you that even as a budget committee member, I have attended school board meetings, and I have attended some Buildings and Grounds, not that many. But, because I try to get, you know, facts from other sources and not just one place, so...
A lot of times when that happens, it's like you're the sole member of the budget committee at the school board meeting? Or there's a single school board member at the budget committee meeting?
Correct. And I don't represent the budget committee when I'm there. I'm a taxpayer when I go individually.
But you're a one-person voice, and you tend to get drowned out. That's why I suggest get the big, bigger group together with a ref.
You're 100% right.
You need a ref of some kind.
Right.
And if I can just, you know, tying off on what Barbara said. Barbara, I felt the same way you have sitting here, too. And I don't say that in an adversarial voice. I say that in, I'm here as a representative. This cuts you guys make, this points you guys make, you guys have taught me a lot in the, the, I worked with you guys last year. I was your rep last year. Some of them were really tough lessons. Some of them were, wow, I wish I'd thought of that. Why didn't I see that? Golly gee, you know, facepalm, you know?
You learn, too.
That kind of thing.
Oh, yeah.
And I feel like, you know, I, I feel that way, too. You know? It's tough working with a situation where you feel like you're...
I know.
You're, you're an outsider, you know? And it's tough to be, it's tough to come in here as a representative to do that. That's one of the hardest years I've had. I didn't think my first year as a board member would be the hardest year. But it was, you know? This year has been tough doing negotiations. But likewise, I, I am not opposed to what Andy is proposing. I would be, I would gladly sit down with you guys if you guys have the time and you guys are willing to do it. You know, it's likely I'm going to be chairing the Alton Board next year. I would be happy to do that. You know, I, I would be happy to make that a priority. I don't know what your feelings are. I know some of you are up for reelection. I know some of you might not be running. I don't know. But for whatever it's worth, you know? I'm going to throw that out there. I think it's time...
It's a great idea.
I, I think, I think it's a great idea, too. And I haven't seen it happen, you know? There's, there's, you know, I've, I've watched on the sideline for years before I ran, you know? And I, I would have thought that this would have happened a while back, you know? I look to Loring sometimes in these situations because he's kind of a bridge, you know? I look at him as a former school board member that I respect. And I look at him as a budget committee rep to the, you know, to this. And so, you know, I throw this out there because I think it's time we get past some of this stuff. We're going to disagree, you know? I know how hard I work. I know what I attend for meetings. I know what I can't make because I have other obligations in my life. You know, I have to prioritize. I've got young children. I do the best I can. Is it always on the mark? No, I wish I was perfect. I'm not. But going forward, if we can put these things aside and work together, I'll be your budget committee rep next year. I'll do this, you know? I mean, if this is what you guys want. But on the same token, I, I, you know, sometimes we get passionate about things and we kind of lose it. You know, we're all, we've all done it, you know? And I think going forward, we need to mend those fences. I think we can work together. I want to do it. If you guys want to do it, if we can go forward and be respectful of each other, I'm willing to do that. And if you've got a problem, if you've got a question, you know, And if you've got a problem, if you've got a question, you know, when I ran, I wanted to be your liaison. I wanted to be the bridge between the issues, the past issues with the school board and this budget committee, because I felt like if anybody could probably mend those fences, it might be me. You know, I've got a, I had a reputation with you guys of having integrity, having been your secretary passing in minutes. You know, I did the best I could, and I worked hard for you. You'd offered me raises, Steve, and I turned them down because I felt like I was paid enough. I think you respected that, you know? I think, quite frankly, personally speaking, you know, if we can put our differences and our pasts aside, I would be willing to work with you guys and do this thing. If you guys have an issue or a question, I would invite you to come to me and ask me about it. You know, if you hear a rumor about something, let's put the rumors aside in the school, too. Things that are going on, is every decision the best decision we could make in the school or whatever our administration could make? No, but let me investigate it and get back to you on it, rather than having a misperception that things are poorly managed out there. I'd like to put that stuff aside, too, and stop doing that. You know, I know you've got concerns. Your concerns sometimes are things that, it's my first hearing of them. What's going on? Let me find out. Let me get to the bottom of it. Well, use me for that, you know? I'm willing to do that, but, you know, if I don't have an answer for you...
That's if we get a rep to our meetings.
Well, but that's the thing, though. If I don't have an answer for you, though, don't get upset with me. I do the best I can. It might be a couple of days, and Steve will tell you. I've worked with him when he's been told no by administration. I've worked with him to get him information before. You know, I've done those kinds of things, so, you know, rather than...
50% is just showing up.
50% of it's showing up, but, you know, I did it last year. Part of it, I knew that there was gonna be some medical things with my family this year that I needed to put my attention to.
I don't have any...
And that's why...
Yeah, I don't have any issues with you personally.
No, and that's part of why I wanted, I'm not your rep this year.
Right.
And I wanted the...
Who was?
We didn't have one. We had a rotating, we had a rotating membership, and sometimes, you know, you can have stuff like that, and everybody will assume that everybody's where they're supposed to be or doing what they're supposed to be doing, or things will come up. You know, people will have emergencies, whatever, illnesses, what have you, you know? I'm not gonna sugarcoat anything. Like I said to you the other night at the board, at Monday's board meeting, I'm willing to, you know, I'm not gonna tell you or make excuses or anything like that. I'll say it's unfortunate nobody was there. I wish there was. In hindsight, you know, I would've been coming in late from an appointment. It would've been very late, minutes before Linda, probably, but that would've been the best I could've done that night, in all honesty. That's where that's at. And that time of year and with some of the things I've got going on personally, that would've been the best I could do. And I'm sorry for that, but I can't change that now. That's water under the bridge. I'm sorry for your frustration. I will, I will offer that to you.
Being the newest person sort of inheriting, you know, up here, very short time period, I could say that, you know, one thing I feel is at least a perception issue, if not a reality issue, is that without the rep here consistently through the police budget, town budget, cemetery budget, everything, it's hard to know that, you know, the school board has a full understanding of everything that we're doing with all the other departments, the back and forth. I assure you, I've seen cut discussions, you know, that, you know, for some of the teams that are at least as equal as, you know, some of the discussions we've had with the school board, but those other departments don't have a seat permanently, you know, set aside. I think the big reason on the school board is because the school is such a huge financial part of the town, it's important that they're there not just to speak, but to hear and to be able to have that opportunity to step in and, you know, speak to it as well, and then take that information back to the school board so that, you know, when you're coming in for the school board items, it's not, it's a lot more symmetry with the whole project, you know, the whole process. You know, that's just my impression.
The selectmen's here.
Yeah.
Isn't a selectman here through every school?
All the time.
Huh? He doesn't miss any meetings.
And again, you know, I can't speak for what the other, I'm one of five in the Alton Board, I'm one of 10 on the JMA Board. I can't fix what's been done. I can't change the past. I'm not gonna offer excuses. What's done is done. Going forward, if you guys want a good working relationship, or if we want to work together and establish a good working relationship together, then let's put the past aside tonight, you know, and let's go forward. If you want, I will finish out the year with you, you know, and going forward, we can continue on. You know, I will do the best I can. If I can't be here, I will do my best to get a representative in my place. If we have no representation at all, I will work with whoever is chair to alert them and let them know. This year, just FYI for full transparency, you guys had several meetings on Tuesday nights. We have JMA meetings that night, and we actually had to cancel a JMA meeting this year because there was a conflict. I was willing to be at both. I was at your meeting that night when the, when that JMA meeting was going on. I was gonna excuse myself from that meeting, fly over to Prospect, vote on whatever needed to vote so that they could convene and then come back. The chair wasn't comfortable with that, Eunice Landry, and Eunice decided to just, you know, "Let's cancel this meeting," but she kind of did a, "You're a board member" first, you know, and it's like, I get it. So we had to make those choices this year.
I was on the zoning, I'm on the zoning board. I had to be at two places at the same time, and I managed.
Yep.
Okay, and I was on the JMA.
But I know you've missed meetings, too, for zoning as well, you know? And that's just the reality of it, you know? That's where you're at sometimes, and, you know, God, I'm never gonna, and I know sometimes people actually forget, you know? That happens sometimes, you know? I remember one time you were playing Candy Land with one of your grandkids or whatever, and somebody called you, and you're like, "I was getting my butt kicked, but here I am."
Good excuse.
But that's, you know, that's the reality of it. I mean, we're all human, but, you know, let's get past the, you know? Then tonight, when I said, you know, "I'm tired of you beating up on the school board," I feel like I work, I know how many hours I work on this stuff and the behind-the-scenes stuff, the phone calls, the researching things, the reading articles, the looking at other contracts, whatever you're doing to be the best you can for your job. I'm not 100%, you know, I don't make the best decisions, or I don't always make the right decisions all the time, but wouldn't it be a boring world if we all did? You know, I mean, that's just the reality of it, you know? Can we do better? You know, absolutely. I'm the first to admit it, you know?
Right or wrong, but never in doubt.
So the...
So after the deliberative session, what I would like to do, Loring, and I'm sorry for interrupting you, after the deliberative session, Mr. Chairman, we would like to have an opportunity to invite the, schedule a time when the board and the budget committee can sit down together.
Mm-hmm.
And if we can preferably do it at a school or some easier access location so that all of our members can attend.
Sure.
That would be, that would be preferable.
Shall we wait to see if it... I think we're gonna have a meeting on January 24th, if it's all right with everybody, if you want to, if we want to bring that out. That's a Tuesday night.
What do you have, January 24th?
That's what I just looked at.
I think...
Is that a Tuesday?
It's Tuesday, or would a Thursday be better?
If you do it Thursday, I can maybe make the ZBA meeting if it's that Tuesday. I just don't have the schedule here.
I have a hard time, Thursdays, Thursdays I can make it, but I might be a little late. If we were to do a 6:30, I could do it. 6 o'clock, I can't. I've got an appointment in Concord.
So 24th doesn't work for anybody? What, 24th? Or would Monday, that Monday work, 23rd?
And is that for budget?